To the meeting, we'll have an opportunity for public comment for things that aren't on the agenda, things that might be on your mind that you want to let the board know. We'll go over those at the end of the meeting, but also the yellow form or golden rod or whatever that is over there, fill that out and hand it to Leslie and we'll get started. So, we're gonna kick everything off with a pledge of allegiance, so we'll do that now. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alright, so, do we have any additional agenda items tonight Randy?
We do not.
Just one quick note for me on here, and we've got two items at the end of the meeting that are gonna require us to go into closed session. For, for the public, that just means that it doesn't allow public in the bill, in the room for those, they're held for usually like negotiation type stuff or attorney-client privilege type information, usually, so, but we can't vote on anything in closed session, so if there's anything that we have to vote on, we'll be coming out of closed session back into regular session to vote. But those are just two items at the end of tonight.
Ted, I apologize, I do need, need to interrupt, and I do have, have a change. On your agenda packet, number thirteen-
Is gone?
Is removed.
Okay.
My apologies, so, because that was printed and published, it'd probably be better if the board had a motion to remove thirteen.
Okay.
I just don't have an update there, it changed, and we'll bring that back to the board at a later time.
Okay, so, I'm looking for a motion to remove item number thirteen from our agenda, which is one of the closed sessions.
So moved.
Mark, do I have a second?
Support, second.
From a host of, host of Wildcats down here, heard Sherry first. Yep, so, any further discussion on the agenda item that needs to be removed? Hearing none, all those in favor of removing that agenda item, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Alright, now we'll get to public comment on the consent agenda and any other regular agenda, do we have any tonight? Alright, so we'll move into recognitions.
Join me at the podium?
Perfect.
Leslie's gonna take photos of us. Alright, let's start with wrestling. Alright, so good evening, everybody. It is an exciting time when the board and administration can acknowledge students and their work in the district. And tonight, we are going to acknowledge, say thank you, recognize a group of state finalists. So this is a big deal, when you make it to states, you're at the top of your game. And so, the, the board would love to extend some congratulations to you and your family, and we'll just have a little family time here, we've got some plaques, and we're gonna start with wrestling, does that sound good?
Perfect.
Alright, so, let's have all three of our wrestlers and coaches come forward that went to states, we have Colby Klinger, come on up. Uh, let's see here, I'm reading off a very small phone here, Elise Morales, come on up, and Shyla Twiman, come on up. Go ahead and stand-
She couldn't make it.
Oh, Shyla couldn't make it tonight, okay, well, we're still gonna recognize her, and why don't you grab her plaque for her and hold that? And, Coach, thanks for being here tonight, talk a little bit about your players.
Alright, so Colby Klinger is a senior, he's been wrestling for fourteen years?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, he was a state qualifier back when he was a freshman, had a COVID year, and then last year just had a really tough time in a regional, but still one of the best wrestlers in the state. Finished your season-
Forty-one.
Forty-one and five. So, he, he, only person he lost to in the state tournament was the eventual state champion. Beated a ton of wrestlers who, one was undefeated coming into the tournament, and that was a great match, and then just came back and got third, wrestled really tough.
Awesome.
Elise Morales, she is a freshman, so she is our first girl state placer, so that was really excited, the women's wrestling is exploding right now, and it's so exciting to see her come in as a freshman and compete at such a high level. And really, she was one of the only freshmen in the state tournament in her weight class, and her record was? Twenty-five and five, yeah. And that has also included wrestling some boys this year, so yeah, she, she beat some good boys this year, but then when she was wrestling the females, she did very well.
Awesome.
Yeah, awesome. Congratulations.
We're gonna get, we're gonna, we're gonna grab a picture real quick, do you want him in front of the podium? Alright, go ahead, right here, Coach, come on, Ted, jump in on this side, I'll go this way.
It's a lot of work for your job.
Thank you, really appreciate it, congratulations.
Good job, Coach.
Congratulations.
Okay, exciting, exciting, and let's see, last time we had some student athletes in, quickly, who, who'd you bring with you tonight? Go ahead, who'd you bring with you tonight?
My mom, I brought my mom. You guys are clinging?
Alright. Mom, thanks for being here. Elise, who'd you bring? Awesome, awesome support system, thanks for being here, family, hope you all are very proud of your work, we're proud of you, hope you are proud as well, congratulations. Alright, let's keep-
Just real quick, do you have a spring sport? Have you, any of you do a spring sport? Wrestling? Alright, I was, 'cause I know that that's-
Good answer.
Right now.
Alright, let's see here, um, I know we've got some of the students couldn't make it tonight, and if they couldn't, we'll, we'll pick them up at the April meeting. Um, Elise Girler, are you here swimming, and then we also, Jack?
Josh.
Or Josh, sorry.
Josh.
Josh, why don't you both come up here now, I've only got plaque, a plaque for one of you, but we're gonna recognize you, you, you just came in, uh-
Yeah.
This weekend, I know, I know, we sent the order out for the plaque, and we're gonna get you taken care of, but we're gonna recognize you, um, Coach here tonight?
No.
I didn't see him, okay, so what we're gonna do is, we're gonna let you guys talk a little bit about your season.
Don't ever know in the picture, just hold this.
Just, okay, Char, you know Charlie, alright. Talk a little bit about how your season went, how you got the states, how, how it went at the, the finals, and you go, and then Elise, you hop in at the, after he's done.
Just like a whole speech?
Well, yeah, I mean, how'd the season go?
I mean-
Brag a little bit.
Alright, alright.
Normally your coach would.
Yeah, yeah, it was a good season, uh, just mostly practicing all the time, um, hard work, we won most of our meets, uh, states was good, I think I got, uh, fourth overall in the Hundred Fly, and I would say ninth overall, or seventh overall in the Fifty Free. But, uh, yeah, it was good overall, nothing really-
You make it sound super easy.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, and how long you been swimming?
Uh, pretty much my whole life.
Okay, and remind me, what year are you right now?
Sophomore.
Sophomore, oh, okay, okay, could be an interesting-
Yeah.
Couple more years?
Gonna get the school records.
Okay.
Good job.
I like that, I like that, alright, well, anything else?
No.
Okay, that's a lot, thanks for sharing.
Yeah.
Alright, and tell us a little bit about your season, and how the finals went, just brag a little bit.
So, going into like, so for diving, you have to qualify for regionals, and then you have to qualify for states at regionals, and kinda going into regionals, I was like, oh, I'm not gonna qualify, so I was just kinda out there having fun, and then it came to the last round, and I was like, man, I'm kinda in a good spot, and then I'd all finish, and they're like, oh yeah, Elise qualified for states, and I was like, oh, what the heck? And then I made it to states, and it was just an amazing experience, like, being around incredible divers, and yeah, it was just really fun, so.
Now, what's the tallest height that you, you compete at, diving?
Uh, so high school's one meter, but club is like three meter.
Okay.
It's like ten-ish feet.
Okay. Doesn't sound very far out there, but-
I know for flipping and twisting.
Yeah, awesome, well-
They're not doing cannonballs, Randy, that's not-
No, well, that's, I competed, okay, enough about me. So, well, congratulations, thanks for representing Madawan so well, we're looking forward to the future, and what year are you?
I'm a senior.
Okay.
Yeah.
What a, what a wonderful way to end swimming at, at high school, so, let's give them a round of applause, awesome job, you guys are awesome, let's get a picture, hold that plaque up.
Yeah, hold up the picture, I mean, it's blue writing on-
Well, that way you're holding the plaque, stand right up in the front, right in front of here, she's-
Look in front of the podium?
Oh wait, we're gonna flank you, I know. Awesome, and on your way back, do you have any visitors with you?
Uh, my dad, uh, former Uber driver, but I get to drive myself around now.
You love that, you never know what's gonna happen in public.
Sherpa.
Do you want this? Yeah, I'll shake your hand, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thanks for being here, congratulations.
Thank you.
Any guests tonight?
I have my mom, Janice, and my sister.
Okay.
Awesome.
Hi guys, thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Well, excellent work, Charlie, okay, yeah, we'll get him next time, now, Charlie bowling, this guy's, this guy's savage on the, on the lanes, um-
Yep.
So Hope Webber, uh, cross-country, she had to work, okay, so, we're gonna-
Alright.
Get your, uh-
Save her for another day.
We'll get her for April, okay.
Alright, perfect.
Again, congratulations, one last round of applause.
Appreciate it, I know she had lacrosse dropped.
Now, the meeting's just getting started, but you do not have to stick around.
There you go.
Thanks for coming in.
I'm sure you guys are so many wrestlers.
See you everybody.
Thank you guys, I like you, but I'm late, I was about to say, I don't like being in a lineup, I'm on camera, like, I don't wanna be a deal. Hopefully, comment later.
I'm gonna move the chairs.
Alright.
Alright. We'll keep moving, that's always great to do, right, be able to recognize our students for everything, which is great. We have a consent agenda tonight, uh, which has secretary's report, monthly financials, um, those types of things in here. Do I have a motion to approve those items? Thank you Steve? Thank you Rick? Do I have a second? I just called you Steve for no reason, I apologize, actually, I know why, 'cause I know Steve George, so, do I have a second? Anybody?
I'll second.
Thanks, Marika, so now we can discuss it, um, I know we'll have more of an update from Pam later on, usually. Any discussion on the consent agenda tonight? Hearing none? Um, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. I just hit the microphone, that's great. So move on to presentations and reports. Anybody from the, anybody from the board have anything they want to talk about for things that went on this month?
At the MPEF meeting, um, it was really neat to hear some of the things that we talk about here being put into action, and, um, Christian Prattley was invited there, and she gave a really informational presentation, but when she, when she said, um, the momentum, that capturing kids' hearts was creating in a building, I thought, oh, that's just so neat to hear, you know, because, you know, we valued it, and, and they do likewise, and Tony got a plug for how he works with MPF, um, so much, and there was one other person too, oh, supplies for success, how thankful they are to be where they are, and it's, you know, things that we talk about here, but then to see it, you know-
In action.
Boots on the ground, in the field, yeah, it was, uh, it was really neat, I was, I was real excited. Um, and then the other thing, strengthening community series, um, that is March fifteenth, six to seven thirty, if you want more information on that, that's online, um, a facilitator, Tracy Brewer, who's our school nurse, um, will be, uh, talking about vaping, so, um, something, you know, that impacts a lot of people, a lot of kids, so that was really it.
Appreciate it, Sharon. Committee meeting, Mark, do you want to give a little bit of an update on what we've discussed there?
Sure, there's a lot been going on, meeting with focus groups, Tower Pinksters is coordinating that, and, and keeping track of the data from those, uh, meetings that we've had now with almost all of the in-house or on-campus groups, except for Fine Arts is scheduled for tomorrow, and Athletics for fifteenth, so, and then all the, the focus groups here will be done, Tower Pinkster will compile that data, come back to us, kinda give us a list of where things are coming out, as far as what the top priorities in the school system are, uh, for what we need to see on the next bond. We're also continuing research, we brought this up a little bit last time, with the option of a swimming pool, which has been on the list for a long time, but how to do that in the best way, one potential is to do it in concordance with the YMCA, which Caledonia Schools in Grand Rapids has done, and they're in the process of kind of sorting that out, but we're trying to learn from them, so, Randy had set up a conference call with them, uh, that Ted and Marika were able to attend also, and gave us a lot of good information, uh, but still researching that to see if that might be a possibility, and if so, could be part of the same bond issue. Again, the bottom line on the whole thing is, though, we want to be able to do this with a no-tax increase for the taxpayers in our district, and, uh, we still want to be able to also fulfill the needs, what we see is important for adding to our kids' education, safety, while here on campus. We do want to, uh, set up a steering committee, uh, made up of kind of all shareholders, uh, representatives of each shareholders, we'd like to get that committee set up prior to spring break, so that we can have our first meeting shortly after spring break, uh, and start really whittling things down, uh, hopefully that'll be a group of twenty to twenty-five people, uh, so some of you may be getting contacted about that too, but, uh, things are progressing rapidly, um, going well.
Thanks, Mark. Board, any of the other board members, or Marika, do you have anything you want to add, or board members, do you have any other questions about what's going on with the site work or site committee work? It's always exciting to think about the future, and what, what this place could look like, and what our kids need, um, and the community as well, so, it's, it's, uh, it's fun to be talking about the future and not other things, so it's, it's great, it's, it's a, it's a great experience. If there's anything else, I think we got curriculum and assessment next. Jay, have you got some stuff?
Yeah, a couple items before it jumps into the new business, uh, section, I got a couple items there as well, but, uh, just an update, um, by, uh, the, the next board meeting, uh, we'll be bringing some recommendations to the board, uh, around some social studies and Spanish resource replacement, uh, as part of our curriculum review cycle, um, our teams have, uh, been meeting throughout the course of the year, today being one of those days within our vertical team structure, and, uh, just kinda having some conversation, I did have a chance to meet with Jenny Ross Klingel, our director of curriculum, and, uh, it looks like our, um, uh, elementaries and secondaries have come up with, you know, some recommendations for resources for social studies, so we're excited, uh, to be able to bring that to the board, I believe, if I remember right, uh, I think the high school said it's been about fifteen years, is, is I think the last time that they've had a new, new resource available to them, so, uh, very exciting, and then, uh, our Spanish team, uh, middle school through high school has, uh, met as well, and, and kinda finalizing some details, I actually met with them this afternoon, uh, just kind of, uh, going through a last couple, couple things before they bring their formal recommendation, uh, to, to myself and to Jenny. Kind of along those lines as well, is that we're, we're starting a lot of planning right now, uh, around professional development for next year, and as part of, um, you know, one of our, our goals within the strategic plan talks about long-term professional development planning for staff members, and, and that's something that kinda collectively we're working on, you know, administratively, and, and with all of our departments, uh, you might have known that we sent a survey out recently, just trying to gather some feedback about professional development, and the use of all these calendar days, and what are things that, that we need, not only for our teaching staff, but for paraprofessionals, bus drivers, food service, uh, all across the district, and so, um, we are in the process of, of just kind of reviewing that information, and plan on taking that to our district school improvement team soon, just to kinda, uh, gather some more feedback on what would be , uh, good next steps, and actually, in the new business, there will be a, another kind of conversation point about that. Just a reminder that after, you know, with spring break approaching here in a couple weeks, when we return from spring break, we're gonna dive right into some state testing, so, I believe right at, uh, our next board meeting, uh, we'll be a day or two away from SAT and PSAT testing for the year, so just a reminder of that, that timeframe, um, and I, I just wanted to make note, doesn't necessarily fall under the curriculum and assessment piece, but we did send out some communication, uh, to the staff recently, and we'll have some more information out to families about some minor changes to the school year calendar. One of the days, and I, I do have to correct myself, I believe it was, uh, December twenty-second, I believe it was the day before, we, uh, had a snow day heading into winter break, uh, we did have a two-hour early release day, the state of Michigan requires, uh, one thousand and ninety-eight hours per year of instruction, and with where we were at, at the start of the year, uh, losing the two hours puts us under that timeframe, and so, uh, we worked very closely with our union leadership to talk about what were some ways in which we could get that time back, and, uh, you know, kind of adjusting to two different types of schedules, uh, we are looking at, and, and will be moving, I believe it's March twenty-third, will now become a full day for our elementary schools, so, uh, ECEC, the early elementary and the later elementary, and then, uh, just on that twenty-third, and that will allow us to gain those two hours back that, that we had fallen behind on, and then, uh, as of right now, May thirty-first, which is the first day of exams, will be moved to a full day for our secondary buildings, so six twelve. And I say as of right now, because right now we are at, I believe, uh, eight days of cancellation for the, for the school year, yeah, at, uh, most all of our buildings, we are at nine at the, uh, early, or early childhood education center due to, uh, water main break earlier in the year. Uh, we are in the process of submitting application for, for forgiveness of those days, so, fingers crossed, in the event that we can get those, those forgiven, then, um, then, you know, we won't have to be making those up, however, if we do receive news back from the state that we have to make those up, we'll be, again, ca- conversations about what that will look like, uh, at the end of the year.
Question on that, just 'cause, so I don't get it confused, is, is that May whatever date? Does that go away if we get, or does that, stay a half-day if we get forgiveness, or is that a full day no matter what at this point?
It would, it really depends on how many days and what types of days we have to make up, meaning, do we have to make up three or two half-days, or do we have to make up two full days, and so we'll just have to figure out where that will fit in, and that's why I said it may, because we may have to move, uh, you know, that full day now all of a sudden not only becomes May thirty-first, but it possibly may become June first as well, and so it just depends on how many days, if we have to make those up, where would they end up falling?
So that leads me to my next question then, why are we doing the early one now? Would that not, it, it, does that not have the potential to get forgiven in the application process, moving that to those additional hours that we need, does that doesn't-
That's correct.
Okay. Any questions or anything for Jay, or do you have more, Jay, I guess, should I ask?
Uh, nope, that's it, Matt, sorry.
Alright, so we'll move on to new business, I think this is probably still Jay, uh, Kids Read Now program?
Yeah, thank you, so, uh, the Kids Read Now program, this is a proposal that we have worked on in collaboration with our elementary principals, uh, and they're building improvement teams, um, I'm trying to find the correct page, and what Kids Read Now is, is, it is a program that will, uh, allow for all of our students in grades kindergarten through fifth grade to receive, uh, sets of books over the summer, and, uh, the books will be, um, assigned based on, you know, uh, reading levels that, that we provide to, uh, to the company, and as students, the great thing about the program is, as students are reading throughout the summer, there's an opportunity for them to log on to the, the Kids Read Now program, to answer some questions, and just kinda interact with the content, and when they're finished with those books, they can actually sign up to register for more books that will get sent directly to the home. This will allow for students all across our elementary buildings to have access to, to, uh, books throughout the entire summer, and, you know, the more that students read, the more opportunities they're gonna have to receive new books, there are also some applications that, that we can use back in the school building upon return to school, uh, and so, you know, this was really just an opportunity, when we were talking about, um, a lot of our summer school program opportunities, and, and how this is funded is through the state equalization funds, our eleven-T state equalization funds, uh, for learning loss, and so some of the things that we have to provide within, uh, our, the eleven-T equalization funds, is that we have to use a certain, uh, percentage of those funds towards learning loss, as well as towards summer programming, and so this is really an opportunity to say, how can we provide an opportunity for all? And, you know, we, our summer school programming right now is really, uh, mostly by invitation only, uh, based on data that's collected at the building, and then we offer those opportunities, but this is gonna be an extension opportunity for every student in our district, uh, the contract is a, a two-year contract, so we can use the funds upfront to pay for the next two summers, uh, which is really exciting opportunity, so, I have used this program in a previous district, and, you know, again, just kinda sharing it with the principals, they felt like this was a, a great opportunity, and we wanted to get in front of the board now, so that, uh, they could kind of finish some of the conversation and planning in preparation for summer, to start talking about, in some cases, how would teachers like to use it during our summer school programming, as well as, you know, what are some potential opportunities that we could use it for when students return to school, because we'll be able to track, uh, student performance and growth over the summer, so really trying to, um, you know, kinda put a roadblock, roadblock into that, uh, summer learning slide that everyone likes to talk about so much.
I move to approve, um, the Kids Read Now program for the next two years.
Kind of questions you guys have for Jay?
Jay, did you say you've used this program in other districts?
That's correct.
And so it's been around a while then, and data shows, it, it is successful?
Yeah, yeah, so, we actually used it in Lakewood, and, uh, you know, just, the, the great experience was the amount of books that we were able to put into students' hands that, you know, especially in that district where fifty percent of your students are on free reduced lunch, and just didn't have access to that type of material, um, you know, the great thing is that teachers still are able to see all of the reading activity that took place over the summer, and, you know, for the kids, one of the, the things that we always heard the most was how excited they got, when all of a sudden a new book would come in the mail, yeah, I'm sorry, well, not a new book, it'd be like three books, you know, brand-new books coming in the mail, you know, something that they got- You know, something that they got to choose themselves off of their inventory. So you know, it, it, it helped inspire, you know, students to want to read. You know, unfortunately, our second year was rolling into COVID, so that made it a little bit more difficult. But the first year, just the, the level of engagement, the amount of reading that students participated in was quite exceptional. So you know, it's just great to be able to offer that opportunity for, for, for students across the board.
Probably a little bit of a sensitive question, but in terms of the program and the books were reviewed by the K through fifth grade committee. They reviewed the actual books that are offered also and the books that can be requested online to be delivered to their home?
Yeah, there's an inventory list uh, of, of books. And so uh, our, again, our elementary uh, buildings, they went back and connected with their teams, just had a, a conversation around the program, types of books that were available. And you know, that, again, just move forward with the recommendation.
Does the, knowing that we're a pretty large district, so it looks like from here, you know, they've taken into account 1,669 children. Because we, it's all-inclusive, that's pre-K through fifth grade, I think it looks like, probably based on our enrollment. But my only thought is, I would love to think 1,669 are going to read the books over the summer, but um, they might not. Teachers didn't hear me, but you know, is there any thought to, they'll offer a percentage? Or, I don't know, I just think for every child, that we're going to spend $43 on every child, which is great if it's going to help them, but realistically, for instance, for Lake Wood, how many students took advantage of the service? Because there's going to be some parents like, here's another form, we're on spring, summer break, and we don't get books in their hands? So I'm just curious if they would say, hey, if 60% of your kids use the book, let's cut it halfway and you pay 80% of this? I'm just curious, because it seems like not every child is going to use $43 worth of books.
I'm going to guess that's part of the gamble for them, right? Is they charge $40 a student and there's going to be some kid that gets 20 books over the summer? And everybody's going to leave with one at the end of the year. I'm guess, I'm guessing that's why they do that model that way, but I could be wrong.
Yeah, I don't know the full detail of, of that, that exact structure.
Multiple books at the start of summer, you, you don't know how many?
Each student starts off with three.
Three, okay.
Do they sign up for the books before school gets out? So they arrive, so the teachers can help in class, help each student get their first order in? And then is there a limit to the number of books a kid can get through?
Yeah, so, so Eric just made me remember, when we first did this, we actually had them all delivered to the high school and we did this massive distribution, it was a little bit chaotic, I mean, thousands and thousands of books. Uh, now they've streamlined it and they just mail them directly too. So the students will select, you know, the books that, you know, based on, on, you know, appropriate reader level, okay? The students will select those books and they get mailed immediately to the home. Uh, and then once they're done and they go on and they can uh, complete kind of the little assessments and just gives them kind of some feedback on their, the growth of their reading, then they can order more books. And you know, I can't recall, I don't remember there ever being a cap on the number that they can get over the summer. I don't believe that there is.
I think, I think you're correct. I, I think as long as they're reading them and have signed up, they're, they're going to keep, keep sending them. And it probably is playing into a little of what Ted said, where some are going to read less, some are going to read more. But, but our, you know, experience with this organization was nothing but professional and student kind of reading-focused. Yep, obviously, they're, they're making some money here. Right, right, it's a for-profit organization, but um, which is a very streamlined way to get, keep, keep the materials flowing over the summer. Pretty convenient where you're not having to go out or um, you know, worry about that.
When the students start school that following year, and I know this would be like up to Madawan, I assume, but is there, would there be any interaction with the books the kids had read discussing? You know, any, any kind of, it wouldn't, I'm not saying formal follow-up necessarily, but it might inspire like what, to Marika's point, ooh, I think I got that book. I sure didn't read it. But listening to their peers and how cool it was or that type of thing, at, at this age, I think that it would impact them. I just wondered, is there any, any continuing um, learning?
Yeah, no, that's, that's uh, a great comment suggestion. Um, that, that's where, I guess, that's where I guess I'm suggesting, I, I, I'm going to get out of the way and I'm going to give that to the buildings and say, you, what, what ideas do you guys want to come up with? Working with teachers, working with our media center specialists? Are there some fun, you know, um, reading challenges that we want to do? You know, that we could uh, engage our students in? So when they do come back, you know, there is some, some sort of recognition as a possibility. And so anyway, so it, that would be where I'd, I'd let them dive into this. We'd get a little bit more information in front of them, uh, and then they start crafting, what could that look like? Uh, when, when students come back in the fall.
I know it seems heft, and I was looking at the price tag, I was like, oof. Right, but I also have to keep in mind that we're using some of the Esser money that we got to help, help catch kids up from the, you know, the um, shutdown types, type of opportunities too and to keep summer slide from happening again. So there's a requirement that we use a certain percentage of, of that money for summer programs and this is a way that we can um, get something that we believe to be valuable for our young learners and um, meet the needs of the restrictions on the grant.
And just as a reminder, this is a two-year quote, okay? So even at the $43 roughly, and we break that down, right, it's a little bit, a little bit more palatable when you think about cost per buck. You know, so um, you know, and I think for some, uh, these might, you know, might be the only books that they ever really have an opportunity to receive in many cases, so. But yeah, as, as a reminder, the 11T dollars, uh, there, there are percentage breakdowns that are required. And again, it was like 11%, if you recall, about 11% of the funding has to go to summer school type of programming. And then 51% has to go to some sort of programming directed towards learning loss. Uh, and so um, this would, this would be part of our percentage that would go towards learning loss.
Last question I have is uh, the total number of students, is that they can participate each year? Because obviously, fifth graders aren't going to be in it for two years, but we have other kids coming up and in. So is that just the, the average for the two years, each year, that many students or?
Yeah, so these numbers are, are what we gave them back in the fall. We'd probably have to tweak this a little bit, just to give them our official enrollment numbers uh, coming in, into the summertime. But then after the year cycle's through and then we get into the spring of 2024, we'd update, you know, our enrollment numbers, obviously classes would move up a year and, and then we'd um, you know, just be able to continue moving forward. So I would imagine that the numbers will stay somewhere within the same, within the ballpark. Um, probably not massively significant swings from one year to the next.
So I think the proposed motion was to not, I don't think it was quite said this way, but it was that what, written down here is the not to exceed 75, so that they, you know, this isn't the exact number. One thing, just clarify Jay, because I wrote it down. I think that this is the per-year price, if I'm reading this quote right. This isn't the total. Only reason I say that, it says 2023 comprehensive, reflects two-year pricing discount. I'm assuming that that is a one-year. Or, or is it, like you said, a two, the total two-year price?
This is the total two-year price.
Oh, okay, great.
Yep.
Because the title says one-year service agreement. And then you start reading, it says this two-year agreement.
That's what led me to believe that.
Yep, so, so this is a two-year agreement. I think the one-year is because what we're saying is that we want to pay for it upfront in year, in one year, even though it's going to cover over two years.
Any further discussion?
Is there no company in Michigan that would do this? Have to send money to Ohio?
Anything else? All those in favor, say aye? Aye? All opposed? Hearing none? Motion passes. There's another new business for the Professional Development Advisory Committee resolution? Is that you still Jay?
Yep, alright. So the, the last piece, uh, the, the Professional Development Advisory Committee, uh, the, the folks that you see listed on this page are all members of our District School Improvement Team. And the, the purpose of why we're bringing this to the board, uh, for more, just of a resolution, uh, is because, you know, for the past, uh, yeah, for three years, we have been using um, days or professional development days to count as days of instruction. Uh, for, you know, we've been using five days per year. Today was one of those examples, right? So where we had professional development happening all day, uh, so that teachers had the opportunity to collaborate through our professional learning community culture. Uh, and in order for us to be able to continue to use professional development days to count as days of instruction, the board has to approve a Professional Development Committee that reviews the professional development offerings. So I kind of shared earlier that we have uh, the survey data back from the staff about, you know, professional development that they'd like to see in the district, things they'd like to see continued or strengthened or, or, or removed. Uh, and so that information would be information I would want to take to this committee. Uh, and again, this committee is made up of, of teachers and administrators, uh, social workers, counselors. And you know, we would again, take the, that to the, to the committee to have the conversation about what, what kind of professional development do we need to bring to our staff?
I'll sign them.
Alright, more discussion? So uh, just a question for me. On the idea, since we're using these, which I agree, uh, as days of instruction, because we are instructing, we're just instructing our staff rather than instructing students. If a snow day were to fall on one of these days, does that then make it a, one of the days that would potentially have to be made up?
That's correct.
So we just say to the back row, drive safely on your way in. We're not sending the buses to get them, so.
Right. Alright, any other discussion? Alright, all those in favor, say aye? Aye? All opposed? Hearing none? Motion passes. Alright, uh, we're moving through this. Are there, is there any public comment? Alright, we have one public comment, but just for the sake of uh, consistency, that's the word I'm looking for. I'll reiterate the public comment rules, uh, it's limited to four minutes or so. Um, and it's generally public comment, not uh, public, it's hard not to look at you because you're the one here. Public uh, question and answer, so don't expect a lot of back and forth between the board. And um, with that, we do have someone, so Rachel, if you'd like to come up and speak?
Thank you for allowing me to speak um, to the board. Thank you for allowing me the time to address the group. My name is Rachel Garrett and I am a resident of Madawan in Texas Township. I have three kids in the school system, fifth grade, third grade, and second grade. And my husband is a full-time paraprofessional in the early elementary school. I wanted to express my concern with the burden we are placing on teachers within our district. Societally, the teachers have become our social workers, nurses, advocates, counselors, nutritionists, caregivers, referees, family liaisons, in addition to their role as educators. And most of this in the face of relentless budget cuts and mounting rigidity in the way we allow them to operate. I understand the predicament of wanting the most out of our educat- education system with so little resources available. And we are one of the more well-funded districts. However, I feel the standards and policies we are pushing from the top down onto our teachers are stifling their ability to teach. While state standards and mandates can't be avoided, the ability to allow our educators to decide the best path to meet those standards should be in our teachers' hands. I understand the need for uniformity across the many classrooms and material and content, but there also should be some freedoms in the classroom. Otherwise, we are communicating to our teachers that we do not trust them to do their jobs. I am a nuclear chemist and at my job, we look to our craft workers, the ones who are in the field consistently for the best solutions, because they are the ones dealing with the day-to-day operations. I feel we should do the same with our teachers. We should allow them the freedoms to make the best decisions for their classrooms, because they are the ones on the front lines every day with their kids getting their hands dirty. If this means allowing the kids a day of relaxation, let them relax. The teachers are going to know what's best for their students, because they are the ones observing them day in and day out. As a board and administrators, I feel we should be supporting the teachers, not adding more mandates, rules, structure to an already overstructured school day. No adult is expected to be productive for all eight hours of their day, so please don't expect this of the children and the teachers. Creativity is born out of unstructured free time. In a quote from Kay Redfield Jameson, children need, children need the freedom and the time to play. Play is not a luxury, play is a necessity. Many of the teachers I've had the pleasure of meeting pour their energy, time, efforts into demanding situations with ever-increasing pressures and ridiculously low pay for what we are asking them every day. Please do not continue to cut the legs out from underneath them or there will be no one left, no one left willing to do their jobs when they are gone. That is all.
Thank you very much. Appreciate the words. I, I think the board echoes a lot of those. I'm sure Randy will reach out and reach out to you for some further discussion. So thank you for, thank you for coming to the board. I do feel like I, I know this isn't question, this, we're not supposed to go back and forth. I will say though, um, just the way school funding works, it might appear that we are one of the most well-funded districts in the state, but we are not. We fall within, what is that, Pam, the 90? It's like 95% of all school districts make, get more poor people funding than us, or something like that? Yeah, so the, it, we're doing, we're, you're right, we do a lot with a little. So I, thank you for the, thank you for the words.
Good evening, board, thank you. Uh, just a couple items to update the board on. The calendar, the academic calendar, not, not what Mr. Lerner just talked about, but the calendar for next year. It's that time of year where we're starting to work on the calendar for next year. And the board um, can expect a draft of that um, soon in your inbox to review. So this is the 23, 24, what we call the academic calendar. First day, last day, major breaks, half-days. Uh, that's kind of all coming together this time, so we're, we're working with the union on that. And just wanted to let you know, it's in process. So that'll be coming, coming your way um, before spring break, Mr. Lerner? What, what are we thinking? A draft?
Uh, I have a meeting scheduled this week, so hopefully within uh, next week or so.
Okay, so it's coming.
Um, update the board on the principal search and the. Update the board on the principal search in the community, the job has been posted, it's getting some traction out there. This is the high school principal search. That posting will run, I believe, to April 15. We've got first round interviews slotted to begin the week of May 1. We have second round shortly thereafter. A feedback survey was put out and, let's see, I checked that Friday, I want to say we were pushing 300 responses. So that was very good, and actually quite a few from students. Some very thoughtful responses from the high school students and staff and community as well. But the student number really jumped out at me, so that's great, great to hear. Speaking of students, at the secondary level on those search committees, we typically have a student or two, parents, representatives, staff, just kind of from a variety of spots in the school, or in the building. Some central office folks as well, another principal or two, so lots of eyes on the candidates. And it's an exciting time here for the high school. So keep that in mind, that link, I will send that link out for the application. Again, just ask the board, the community, staff, if, you know, in your travels and in your kind of circles of who you're running with. Keep the word out and pass that link along. And we're going to look forward to the search process coming up here, starting in May formally, with the interviews rather. And I'll close with this, lots of student recognition tonight. But had a chance to hang out with the robotics team at St. Joe. And it's always an exciting time to have the robotics team, that season ramp up. And kind of be in on the energy there. And a couple notes on this, they practice, kind of their home base is Trimation Industries, right here in Madawan. And if you weren't aware of this, they've been there for several years. A big complex there, lots of warehouse space, they just added on. And they have been incredibly gracious to allow space for our robotics team. So I want to give a shout out to Trimation, first of all, for the support. But I was out at Trimation a mere, I think, three weeks ago. And they were busy welding aluminum and putting this frame together and there was not a lot of this robot. It was like in pieces, looked like a scene out of, you know, Star Wars after C-3PO got partially blown up or whatever. And to see that robot at the competition not but a month later, and to look at all the programming that was done and all the components. I mean, it's shockingly impressive what this group of students and coaches can do. That's from the ground up, welding CAD, programming. Yeah, it's pretty impressive, so just want to give a shout out to that team and I think they're in for a good season. But with that, a couple other items, obviously we have a closed session coming up to talk about negotiations, but I'd field any questions from the board, generally speaking on items.
I have a question on next year's calendar, I know we've talked in the past that there's been some discussion about trying to, I don't know, it's like a regional major breaks calendar or whatever, to try to sync up Van Buren and K Risa and maybe Alligan. Or I can't remember what you guys were talking about, to try to make it, because I know we have some staff who have a spouse that works in another district and having, or unsynced major vacations is tough on some of those families.
Yes, I believe Kalamazoo County and Van Buren County have developed or worked out an agreement where our major breaks are going to align. Do you, okay, so I'm looking at Mr. Lerner, because is that starting, I think it's not this coming year, but it's the following. I think it was a two-year stint, that hasn't changed, has it?
The 23, 24 calendar year, I believe, is still the same.
24, 25?
So they'll be different next year, but the year after is when.
Yeah.
Because I don't know if that contractually with Van Buren ISD, if they had to work through all of that, because it was already in place.
I believe so, so last year, that's where I got to two years, last year they worked that out. So it was going to say status quo this year, 23, 24, and then in 24, 25, I believe they are lining up, that was the agreement, the counties, the county calendar, so that will put us on, the big one was spring break and Christmas, obviously. Yeah, so that's good news coming, they finally worked it out. And of course, we would follow suit with the ISD on all that.
Any other questions or anything for Randy? If not, I'll entertain a motion if someone, I'll make a motion to go into closed session to talk about negotiations.
Second.
Thank you, Rick. Point of discussion, just for everybody, I don't think, it doesn't appear there's going to be anything to vote on when we come out of here. But if there is, we will come back into public session and vote, you're more than welcome to hang out and come back later. Also, just for the community that may be watching on YouTube, I don't, we don't ask the audio visual guys to stick around through these things. So if we do come back, it won't be on YouTube, but you have to trust us, just like the old days, that we'll come back and vote and do that kind of thing, so. So with that, is there any other discussion for going into closed session? All right, so we'll go into closed session at 7:30. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Motion passes, thank you everybody for coming.